February 20th, 2024, I would seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Amy, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Jessica. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 5C, the Special Board of Education meeting, February 26th, 2024, I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kelly, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Calandra. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion will carry. And the last is 5C, the Special Board of Education meeting, February 27th, 2024, I would seek a motion to approve.
I will.
A motion by Jess, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Kelly. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, you got those, Amy, okay. Motion will pass.
She had them before we even abstained.
She did. Item 6, discussion and possible decision on the updated school perception community survey.
Thank you, Diane.
I just wanted to mention that there is new updated information in your black folder in front of you, okay? Okay, you're good to go.
All right. Board members, thank you so much for all of your wonderful input over the past six weeks or so. Uh, we've been continuing to uh work on this. Uh, we've had involvement uh with Steve and Michelle, myself, uh Darren and Rob from School Perceptions, Baird uh assisting us with this, and so uh we're really excited tonight. Uh, we're gonna have School Perceptions walk us through uh the latest draft uh for the survey, uh open it up to discussion, and then uh looking for approval after discussion of this survey to uh keep moving forward. I mentioned at the last meeting, the sense of patient urgency. I appreciate all the board members uh for having that sense of patient urgency, and um I'm confident uh that we can get this done and and move forward here this evening. So Darren, thank you, thank you, board. I'll turn it over to Mr. Darren Severs.
Great, uh good evening, everyone, and thank you, Rob. Um, yeah, this is exciting because we're getting to the finish line here, and uh the goal always is to make sure that this is a customized survey that truly reflects what you as a school board need in terms of answers from your community before you decide if you're going to referendum, and if you do go to referendum, what resolutions you will write relative to a potential operational and a potential capital referendum. So you've seen several renditions of this. This latest version opens with an opening letter to the community that really explains the circumstances. So the opening is very direct. The Mozzanee School District is facing two challenges. The district is projecting a budget deficit for 2425. In response, they'll need to be cut cutting $800,000 from the budget. Um, and unless we receive additional funding, we'll need to make more cuts to programs, services, and staff. So that outlines the operational need. The second, second point, significant investments are needed in our buildings and grounds. The costs exceed what can be paid for from the annual annual budget. So then this survey goes on to say that this survey explains in more detail, and will get taxpayer input on what to do next. We assure them that the survey is completely confidential, and all the survey data is returned to School Perceptions as we're an independent research firm. Then page one walks them through the two ways that they can take the survey. They can take it online. Roughly 70% of your community will probably take it online. That's what our our tracking of data shows. 30% will mail back to our home office, and we'll input it by hand for them. Right now, if we get it approved tonight or the next day, we can send it to print, launch it on the 8th of April, and have it close on the 29th of April to provide you data by your May your May board meeting. It's signed by interim superintendent Robert Way and the board. So that's page one. Page two. Page two, where we do a bit of educating. We talk about these deeply declining tax mill rates and what it has done since 2013-14. 2013-14, it was at at $10.43. It's estimated that by the fall of 2425, it'll be $5.71, a roughly 44% decrease. The thing we talk about, the financial challenges the district's facing. Bottom line, like many districts, the recent state budget did not provide enough funding to keep up with increasing costs for transportation, utilities, technology, compensation, and services for students in special education. To balance the budget, the district is planning to cut $800,000 next year. Even with these reductions, the the budget deficit is projected to grow to more than $2 million per year in the following year. We are not alone. Eighty-four percent of districts have sought an operational referendum asking local voters to provide their schools with additional funding to make up that state budget shortfall.
Darren, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I apologize, I was one board member not at the 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 next meeting where we we went through the survey. But the board meeting that happened the week previous, it was noted that even if the the referendum doesn't pass, we still have to cut the 800,000 because it this cut is happening before the referendum even is voted on. Is that clear in here to people?
I guess that's where we're going through it. If you don't think it's clear, then we've gotta make it more clear.
It kinda says that to balance the budget, the district is planning to cut approximately 800,000 next year.
I just don't know if if a survey taker would wonder if,
Right.
okay, if I vote yes, then they won't cut that. Like, oh, I'm gonna try to save people's jobs and vote yes. In essence, this is happening whether you vote yes or no anyways. It's my only only thought.
I think it's clear because it says even with the reduction budget.
That part I I think does spell it out, but I wasn't sure.
I think that's a good point that you brought up, Peter.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate the the good question.
Just the way it's clear.
To balance the budget, the district is planning to cut approximately $800,000 next year, no matter the outcome of the referendum.
And also in other communication channels, for example, our regular communication that goes out to all community members, in the last month edition of that publication, I did very straightforward say that, and also in future communications, we will certainly uh keep the community apprised of our uh budget scenario as it sits at this moment in time, and update them as well.
Okay. All right. So then we get into what the board asked for, and that is to not just have a set operational amount, but to give the community some some empowerment and some choice. So this is what we would call, we do with some districts, a good, better, best scenario, or option 1, 2, 3. So the first option, if voters support a referendum providing 2.05 million per year, the district would be able to maintain most programs and services. That's right in line with that $2 million fiscal cliff that you talked about the prior page. Option 1, and then we're very explicit, option 1 would increase taxes over current levels by approximately by approximately $126 for every $100,000 of property value. Option 2, if voters support a referendum providing 2.95 million per year, the district would be able to maintain all programs and services, increase building maintenance funds, and update math and reading class material. Option 2 would increase taxes over current levels by approximately $180 for every $100,000 of property value for each.
Darren, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, you froze off.
Oh, okay. The district, the district could be able to pay for everything in options 1 and 2, and help offset estimated increasing costs due to inflation. So trying to get out ahead of this fiscal cliff a bit. Option 3 would increase taxes over current levels by approximately $226 for every $100,000 of property value for each of the next four years. If voters do not support any referendum, the district would need to cut approximately 2.05 million in staffing, resulting in larger class sizes, programs, and services per year from the operating budget. This would begin in the 2526 school year. So that gets to your question about uh kinda what the timing is. 800,000 is already in place for this coming year, and so that 2526 is the the year where this money would kick in, and we either need to cut another 2 million, or option 1, 2, or 3 saves us from that scenario. So this is the first survey answer box. Which operational referendum amount would you you support? And we lay it out for them, highest to lowest, and then we ask them, also, I would only support a smaller referendum. I would not support any referendum. I'm not sure, and I need more information. And we really track that not sure uh data for you because um you if there's a lot of people, company average is about 12% to say they're not sure, but if it's up in the twenties, then clearly more information needs to be sent home before any any decisions are made.
Okay, so I have a question, this probably for Michelle. Uh, just easy math, either option 1 or 3 can be easy math. For, so Michelle, for um, let's just say a property is assessed assessed for $400,000. So on the first option, you've multiplied 126 times, in essence, 4. It says the word next four years, I wanna make sure that it means every year it'll be $126 times 4.
That's correct.
Not.
Add on to the levy.
Yep, all four years, you're gonna get that extra tax, not, just wanna make sure. That was clear, okay. That's how I read it, but.
Yep, it's not cumulative, though. That's where sometimes there's confusion. It's not a new 126 on top of another 126.
Oh, so, so, yeah, it's flat, yeah. But but it's it's $500 every year, your taxes will be for four years, not, what was I thinking, not not $500 total over four years. Just wanna make sure.
Yep. Okay. So then we get into the facilities. The following, the following projects need to be prioritized to help establish our long-range facility plan. And in this case, we did a prioritization approach, where we asked them to use a scale on high, medium, or low. High being addressed immediately, medium being important, but addressed in a future project, low, not a priority at all, do not address in the near future. So we chunk them by somewhat by by um project scope. So the first one, high school kitchen and cafeteria. High school kitchen cafeteria are nearly 65 years old, and they need significant updates and repairs. This project would build a new high school kitchen cafeteria, remodel the existing kitchen cafeteria into a community fitness center, 10.9 million.
Can we make sure that the word "the" is spelled correctly?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Amy, come on, where are you? Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Secured entrance and high school office, district office, 4K center, a series of of projects. Uh, Rob, by the way, I made a slight change, I'll point that out when we walk through this.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay, Siri. Uh, the high school entrance and district office have security limitations, and 4K programs lack a dedicated space. So this project would build a new high school office with secured entrances to better monitor control access. It would move the district office to the previous high school office location, and we create a dedicated 4K center, Rob and I added with a secured entrance, because the last thing we want is to to say, or moving the 4K to a a facility that isn't secure, because that's our youngest learners. So we make that very clear that the 4K center would be secure, and that would be in the building where the district office was located. This is something a lot of districts do, their 4Kers, their youngest learners, half-day program, they have a a unique dedicated space to welcome them to school and get them started.
Okay, I have a question here. I I do not understand this. What is a dedicated 4K center? Is it, the 4K at elementary school would go there only? The other three locations, what is a dedicated 4K center?
So with the construction part of this project, some of the work that was done in the past, looking at putting together um ideas, including buildings and grounds, included uh some flexibility for the district to expand uh 4K early wraparound services. And so we're asking the community for that such need, if we would grow our programs, looking at updating uh our facilities to accommodate for that. And Steve, any any uh other comments related to your work?
Yeah, I think it's all, yeah, I think you said well, it's really regarding what kind of space you're gonna require with your growth that you're looking for. If we vacate this space to move into the um current high school site, there's a lot of spare footage in this facility that could be reused, purposely utilized, and pretty minor expense to make that happen. So it'd be an option to the public, I think, to say, to what your point is, we have, we have the ability to offer more care for you because we're gonna gain some space, and if you wanna harness your 4K and grow those numbers, is that attractive for your bottom line?
Do any other board members think that this is a can of worms that's gonna have a ton of questions like I just asked? I I'm all for it, I'm just saying, what is it? Are you gonna get a lot of people who are, they're not gonna know how to vote? Because they don't know what what is it, what does that mean? What does that mean for Mozzanee preschool? It's my only comment. Again, I wasn't in the room that night, so I apologize for that, but I don't understand, I don't understand it.
Could you put instead of the word dedicated, a possible dedicated? We don't know what we're gonna do with the program as far as like daycare needs? You know, wraparound care?
So could you help sell it by saying that? Daycare, wraparound.
I don't think this is clear as to really what your intentions may or may not be, or what the public may or may not want to be.
I mean, there are people that love those other locations, does that mean they're going there? I I don't know.
But I don't, I don't think I would.
Possibly take it off if the board isn't comfortable to include that as an item to uh get a pulse. And remember, we're just getting the pulse from the community. So i- in essence, if we don't want the pulse of the community on that particular question, we can certainly take that off.
And the 2.4 million, how much of that is the 4K dedicated center?
To be exact, I have to look and see what Stephen figured, how we would re-figure this building. Then we have dollar slate per foot. Uh, we use those numbers because nothing's been designed yet, right? So it's really, these are base estimates, and I think it's important to note that it does say estimated cost.
Yeah.
There's nothing defined in there.
No.
You know, but you know, if you don't wanna put the 4K center in there, you wouldn't have to. I guess the question's gonna be, you're gonna have a a building that's gonna be vacated, you know, and how would you wanna harness that building?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, by the way. I'm trying to stop questions coming to us.
Are you saying you should you should say 4K center slash daycare?
Could you say early learning center slash wraparound care?
Maybe that would be a better.
Sure, I love that, yeah.
So it's not at all of our 4Ks going to necessarily be here?
That might be a better idea.
That would be a community decision.
I like that.
Because we don't have to.
Early learning slash wraparound care.
I like that.
Yeah, slash wraparound.
And I would say a possible, because you don't really know, like you said, Steve, getting in, you might find that we can't do certain things here.
And I didn't have a head hold.
So maybe we add the word possible, create a possible dedicated early childhood, childcare. What you know, yes, yes, I like that.
That's great. Yep, I like it.
I'm all for doing something 4K. We need to expand on that, so.
I agree, but I I, and I I don't know what I don't know, but I don't know if the the survey that Jolynn had put out also gives some type of an indicator that feeds into this, the way it was put up.
Right.
Phrased, or what have you.
So I think it gives us much more flexibility with what she phrased it as.
Right. Early learning, I like that.
So I changed, I changed it. Oh, go ahead, Megan.
Sorry, um, I don't know if they can see that my hand is up. That that's my other concern, if you look at the the one before, the remodel the existing kitchen and cafeteria into a community fitness center. We've hemmed and hawed about this on the on the safety committee also, and so I hate for us to be going back and forth with, yes, we're gonna make this a community center, but at the same time, this is a school, you cannot come into it. You know, this is the day and age that we live in. I I do feel like there's a maybe too much ambiguity there um that we could possibly either narrow in on and say something like before and after school hours or something like that, but to not give false hope if we have no intention of, or if we do have an intention, I don't know, maybe we do. Um, but of allowing people to use a community fitness center all day while school's in session.
Megan, is is your suggestion to take the community part off and just establish it as a fitness center so that you're not boxed in?
Well, let me add another another comment to that, Megan. Community fitness center would make me think that we could use a different fund to pay for it. Could we use the public fund for?
Not for construction.
Not for construction, okay?
If it was drawn up in such a way that it that there is, that it's truly separate and safely separate from all areas where students will be going to and from classes, then yeah, you could, you know, but without looking at that, you know, that blueprint in front of me, and I don't even remember, but was it drawn up like that? Or is it going to give us the same issue with the pool, where we wanna let people into the pool, but yet we know that that's not safe?
Well, and and I think, Megan, what we're trying to do is like what Darren's expressing, that we can, we're trying to get a pulse. I mean, nothing has to be finalized, because we gotta see where where the answers are gonna come in.
I'm fine with leaving it as a community fitness center, so long as on those plans, there's a way to actually make it a legit community fitness center where, you know, it's far off from other entryways into the school.
So use the word possible.
Because what you're saying, Megan, is correct. And even with what Peter brought up, if somebody comes and asks us, you know, what is your dedicated? And what is, you know, oh, so we're gonna have this cool community center? Well, we don't know that. So it does have to be clarified.
Yeah, and I've never been through a referendum. If you kinda put this out there, they approve it, and then you don't do it, well, we're all done.
No, so no, that's all, all.
Okay. So I added, I added the word possible to community center. I changed the header on the secured entrance to early learning center instead of 4K. And then the third bullet is create a potent, create the potential for an early learning center with a secured entrance, so that you're not locked in on 4K, okay?
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good, good work.
Now, the next project, particularly exciting for me, because we've been doing a lot of these across the state. We did that in my old district in Slinger, career and tech education, technical education. Current technical education classrooms and labs are too small to support growing student interest in these fields and to train students for jobs in the local area. This project would update and expand the current metal fabrication classroom and lab areas, which I hear you have a thriving uh metal fabrication program, build a new woodworking classroom and lab area, and add an automotive classroom and lab area. 7.9 million. Then, tech technology, technology infrastructure. Our major technology systems are outdated and need a replacement. This project would update our servers, replace our fiber and connectivity systems, which we're just in the day of age where that's just the way stuff needs to be wired to run all the devices. So that's 1.3 million. Then we get into locker rooms and classrooms. The high school boys and girls locker rooms are nearly 60 years old and haven't been updated since they were built in 1965. Building systems such as plumbing and HVAC are failing. This project would build new boys and girls locker rooms, remodel the current locker rooms into classrooms and learning areas. Then finally, the gym. This is something the board debated quite a bit the last time I was with you. The high school gym is too small to meet school and community needs. This project would expand the gym to better meet the school and community programming needs and provide a larger space that can serve as a community shelter as needed. The district is applying for FEMA funding to help with the costs.
So I got another question. So I thought the old drawing showed like a whole new gym on a new footprint. Is this now adding to the gym, is that?
No, what you saw, that's how I read it. What you saw in the drawing, you know, on the last one, put the other box, that is what this gym is talking about. That is that.
To me, this is worded that we're gonna knock down a wall or two and fill up.
No, no, that that thing gym would stay. You'd be adding on to the facility.
Provide a larger space. So I could take that as the the uh checkbox, one is expand the gym to better meet the school and community programming needs, provide a larger space. That, to me, could mean that we're just gonna expand the size of the gym, not build a new gym.
Right, I agree. Yeah, I don't like the word expand. Yeah, I agree.
Well, are we gonna expand the existing gym?
No.
Okay, yeah, I think I think this is being a little.
Okay, so I'm paging that to, good, good question. I'm saying now add a gym to better meet the school and community programming needs, provide additional space. How's that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we allow comments, question suggestions on any of the capital projects. And then we get to the, well, it's not the million dollar question, it's the multimillion dollar question. We we itemize all the projects being considered in the same order. We add up a total, and then we provide a table that shows the cost of different increments of project scope. We start with a base of 14 million, which in addition to the operational, would, because it's a 20-year bond, would add four years, $4 per year. Twenty. Twenty-two, 22 million would be an additional $31 per year. 30 million would be an additional $58 per year. 38 million would be an additional $85 per year. We just got these numbers this afternoon from Kevin Mullin at Baird. And what we'll do is we'll combine by adding them, asking them, what referendum amount would you support, assuming the projects included are acceptable to you? We'll ask them how much they're willing to spend, and we'll, we'll combine that with their feedback on the six projects that were outlined. And then we start spending the money on the highest priority item.
Oh, that's a good point.
The only comment I have about your box there where it says like $4 per year, $31 per year, I don't really see per year for, is that 20 years?
Yeah, that's what we were just asking.
We're wondering, because it says a 20-year bond, but.
20-year bond.
Is that a flat amount, it doesn't go up with inflation? It's a flat amount.
It does not.
Because you're using an interest rate factored in amortization, okay.
It's on the bottom of that last.
Yep, I've seen that, but we were just, okay.
It's a 20-year.
And sometimes, I know, just just a little little personal anecdote, bond rates are a little higher right now. Sometimes when that settles in, you can you can refinance. We were at, we were at 2.45 back in 2016-17, so there's opportunity for it to go down, but it will not go up.
Terrible time to be going off a bond, but it is what it is.
So again, we'll compile the priorities of these projects on the previous pages with how far they're willing to let their taxes go up to support the projects, and try to find a sweet spot, let's say it's, let's say it's 23 million. We'll see which project have the most support, and those projects, draw a line in the sand right at those projects. So if they say, hey, I'll support the high school kitchen cafeteria, secured entrance, and add those totals together, that's that's just under 14 million, then tech ed. Well, then you'd be right around that $22 million figure. Maybe that's all we can get done at this time, when we get some really nice things done in the kitchen cafeteria, secured entrance, and our tech ed program is is modernized. And then you save the the rest for a future date. We also, we also ask them, is there any other information you need before you make a decision? Would the district make that feedback? If you would not support the referendum, what are the primary reasons? And then while we're surveying them, we ask them for district satisfaction measures. How are they feeling about the education being provided? How are they feeling about the communication? How are they feeling about the fiscal management? And overall, how prideful are they feeling, um, the community feels about their school? And then we call this our net promoter question. On a scale of 10 to 10, how likely would you recommend the district to a friend or family member? I, which correlates very, very highly with referendum support. So if they're feeling very good, and give you a lot of sevens, eights, and nines, our NADIS knows you have a much higher chance of passing a referendum than if they're they're unhappy with you and giving you a lot of fours and fives. Pretty obvious, but we've tracked the data over our 20 years and and studied that. Also, that we're able to disaggregate by municipality, by age. Are they an employee, are they a parent? And then a critical question, how do they like to receive information from the school? Because when you get your survey results. Because when you get your survey results, I'll present them to you in May, but then you need to take your information back to the people that took the survey and tell them what you found out. They, you can't count on them to attend that board meeting or go listen in on the board meeting. You'll need to send out some kind of newsletter to say, we heard you. So these are our plans for the fall, once the board decides what your plans are and if or when you're going to get a referendum.
Megan's got her hand up.
Thanks, Peter. Um, I, I have a question and possibly in addition. On the locker rooms and classrooms, um, I haven't been in the locker room since I was in high school, but I'm assuming that they're not ADA compliant, so possibly add that verbiage. Assuming, of course, that they're going to be made ADA compliant for all kids.
Any remodeling, I assume.
An important note, you know, that we're, it's the law, we're not complying and we're going to comply once we fix this.
Megan, we are in compliance right now because we're not remodeling. Just, just want to point that out.
Okay, but once we remod, right?
Once you start a remodel, once you pull one screw out of the wall, you're, you're non-compliant.
And, and the other piece, we have two, I don't want to get deep in the weeds with it, but of course, you know, whatever you're building today, it needs to be exactly equal square footage as well. Currently, that's not the design. Years ago, they looked at it differently, but today that's not the standard. So once you open that can of worms, the design will be ADA compliant, title line, all of the stuff has to fly together or you don't go there, so.
I don't know if that's worth adding or not.
I think that you just solved saying 60s, you're, you're at that age of wanting to.
I think so too.
I think that tells the public that, hey, you got justice earlier.
I'm going to throw up my.
Okay, and my, my second thing, the gym part, you know, I, I made the analogy of I really like when I see something at Target that has a Klan sticker on it. I think there's something to that. I think it's a marketing tip that's, you know, well-used because it works. So in addition, possibly to the FEMA funding, I would add something about maybe private donations or something like that.
Do I have some other board members that want to weigh in on that before I add that to the survey? Do you want to, you want to go down the road of donations or?
Couldn't you almost say that for every, every one of these?
You could.
I mean, we could name one of these after Diane, I mean, been on board all this time.
Yeah, the only, the, the only cautionary tale I'll tell you is we've done that with other surveys and the community will again say, well, who's that donor? How much are they giving? And so it doesn't really move the needle because it's such an unknown.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm going to throw my last bomb here is if I'm a taxpayer that doesn't sit at board meetings every month, how do I truly understand in this survey that it is two different referendums, clearly and bold, and that the two numbers compound with each other? I don't, I don't see that. Like, the opening paragraphs doesn't even talk about the word referendum. You know, page two, uh, no, page three, I think is the first time I see the word operational referendum. It's not bold, it's not underlined, it's not all caps. My only comment is there's two referendums. We are sitting here talking, these numbers are getting pretty big. Do people think when they go do the second part of the survey on the 38 million, 30 million, that it's on top of what they just, we're going to vote for the operational referendum? That's my only two cents.
Yeah, that's good feedback. I can go through here in bold and underline the operational referendum in a few places. Underline it on page two. You see there at the close of page two? Put it at the start, part, the start of page three.
Yeah, I think also up at the top of page one, something, whether you call it op, uh, operational referendum one?
Or you put A and B, you know, two, you know, two referendums, A, operational, B.
Right, right.
You know what I mean? And then label them that way as far as funding to support operations, A.
Okay. So you're wanting one and two for us to put in the words operational and capital referendum?
Sure.
Correct, yes. I don't think people are going to understand the difference.
Right.
I don't like some either.
And I think moving forward, obviously, we start educating the public now.
Right.
And keep that conversation going. It's an ongoing conversation and really knowing our communities. Do people prefer face-to-face? Do they prefer coffee clutch? Do they prefer electronic, Facebook? And so, again, as we continue to strategize communication for our communities to be cognizant of the communication channels. Cover them all.
I, I wasn't here either, so, um, this will be mailed to everyone also? And the.
All, I was going to ask that, all districts within the dis, the, the voting district, right?
Darren, can you go through, clarify what we talked about at the last meeting?
Yeah.
On sending this out, going to the printers, getting lists for folks that live in all of our townships. And there's some outliers we don't want to miss, right, Donna?
Correct.
So can you just talk us through that piece again? Thank you.
So what we do is we, we, we work with a printer and we, we talk to, we talk to any, any of the county officials that oversee your boundaries and we will get, we have gotten a mailing list for every property owner in the school district. So any property owner in the school district will get this survey. And just to make it, because we have their email addresses, we, we hit the parents and the staff with a secondary opportunity via email where they can take it via web link as well. We don't have email addresses for the entire community, but for this, but for 25% of staff and parents, we do. So we put it in their laps in their inbox as well. And then they're all have a alphanumeric one-time usage code. It can only be taken once. If a husband or wife disagree inside that house, all they have to do is call the district office and they can get an additional survey. Or they can just get a, a second code that they take it online and they can take it again. But there's no opportunity to ballot stuff for or against because it locks up after one usage.
What was the percentage of, that we were kind of hoping to get back? Is it 10%?
No, our company average is 18.
An 18, do we know what number of mailings possible, um, there would be? Just trying to do the math here.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, let me, I'm going to go in your file and see if I can pull it up. Bear with me.
While he's looking at it, I wanted to mention Greg is in the audience tonight. So he's getting all up to speed on. So Greg, you can say hi to everybody. He's their next superintendent coming in July.
Thank you.
I do have a point.
Okay, uh, so you're 6,445.
So 18% is 480. No, no, my number. 6,450. 6,000, did you say?
6,000.
6,445.
1,200, pushing 10,000. That's great, okay.
I don't want to backtrack, but in the orig, in the last survey that we had, the last draft, on the first page, there, there was a, it says financial planning and then it says one, capo referendum. And explains what it is and then two, an operational referendum.
Thank you, pleasure.
But it's not in the new updated survey.
Yeah, maybe that's what my mind was thinking.
The last survey, but I know there was.
I just think that we got to be clear to people because these are real numbers.
I, like, I think we still need to say referendum A, referendum B. So they understand that or.
Is there, do you have to word it exactly how it's going to be on the ballot?
That's probably hard wording.
I don't know, but do, or do you have to do one or two? I don't know.
I think that wording.
Maybe not.
For the survey, we can agree, we need to strategize if we choose to go to referendum based on what our community is saying to us, then to take a look at presenting that to the community.
Don't we have to make the motion for the exact wording? Probably later in the year that goes on.
Yes, absolutely.
By, by the, by the fourth, by the fourth Monday in August, you'll have to have a lawyer write it up, draw that up for you, yep. And that'll be the legal, legal wording on the ballot. So in response to your feedback, I put it on the, on the opening letter now. Unless we receive additional funding through an operational referendum, we'll need to make more cuts. And then I say the cost for the building projects exceed what we can pay for from the annual budget. Therefore, the district is seeking feedback on a potential capital referendum.
Darren, you're not sharing that, just so you know, you're not sharing it if you want us to see it.
Uh, that's my bad, sorry about that. I went to your file to look at the mailing and I forgot to pull it back up. So page one, I put capital and operational referendum front and center in bullet point one and bullet point two to explain operational referendum would be for the, for the funds needed, uh, in response to the cutting for operations and then investments in buildings and grounds. The costs exceed what we can pay for from the annual budget. Therefore, the district is seeking feedback on a potential capital referendum.
Should we underline operational referendum and capital referendum?
Yeah, I think so.
So they stand out.
Sure.
I mean, fold it.
And then on page two, when we explain the mill rate, then we again talk about operator referendum, bold and underline.
Perfect.
Page three, operational referendum, before we talk through the three options. And then we go through the priority rating scale exercise. And then I'm going to bold and underline one more time, capital referendum before they weigh in on these different dollar amounts, the scale and scope that they're willing to support. And again, when I give you my report, we'll give you kind of a X in the road, where the dollars go and, and what priorities they value. And what we, what you'll do is you'll only support the, you only spend the money on the projects that have support. It, it could be, they may be willing to spend 22, but if it's only 14 million worth of projects that they really prioritize, then that's what you'll do. So, I mean, these are, these are actually very favorable tax mill rate impacts. I'm working with some districts where 22 million is $235. So this is, this, this could be worse.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's still less than where it was 10 years ago. I agree, right. Just want to make it clear, right.
Yep. So then the last question, this is the last page is your mailer. And I just need direction from the district. Rob and I'll talk one last time. Right now it says, any questions, please call the district office number or visit the website. We've got to establish, are we going to have a website in full page or do we just want people to call? And that's where I need direction from, from the tech team and Rob before we go to print. But we're at the stage now, well, we're at the stage now where we seek soft approving with your valuable input tonight. We have a third, third-party English professor that proofs this, make sure all our commas are in the right place. No embarrassing capitalizations or the "the" that you've taught before. And then we, and then I send it to Rob one last time, just so that he knows what the editor caught. If it's a period or a comma, we don't worry about that. We're just glad he caught it. He does every project for us and is meticulous. And then we send it to print with the idea that we'll launch this. It should be arriving in mailboxes the ninth or 10th of April. And we'll close it on the 29th of April. And then I'll be presenting to you on a Tuesday night sometime in May.
Regarding the website, how can we have the, a website created regarding the referendums by? Like now, when the surveys?
I didn't know, yeah, just offering the opportunity for an FAQ document or anything you want to load on the website.
Website now, both of the referendums? We could put enough on there.
Yes, I think an FAQ sheet immediately, because we'll start to get, I'll start to get phone calls and start to answer questions. And so, boy, you have two questions. Start putting it out there, have an FAQ sheet. I think it's great.
So we just give them our school website then right now? And then there'll be a banner on there to refer to?
I think never stop buying.
I'll just look that up and put it on there then. I'll put it up there. Yep, very good.
Okay.
Any, any remaining questions from the board or district administration?
Oh, yes, I have several now. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out that I thought might be a bit confusing and need a bit more clarification. So for example, on, and it would be great if the pages were numbered, but at the bottom of page, or I should say on page four and then page five, where it has the facility projects listed. Just trying to put myself into the general individual's shoes. I don't know if I'm supposed to be ranking them like one through three, meaning I can only pick one low, one medium, one high on that page? And then the same with the next page. I just think that there needs to be a bit more clarity that if you think all three are high or all three are medium or whatever, you can pick more than one answer, if that is our intention.
But isn't that kind of up in that grade?
That's what I think, yeah.
Up and, or it says.
It, it says that.
Please use the scale so you can still address every one of them as high.
Use the scale for, for each question?
Right, but that's what I'm saying. Right, and it does say that, but what I'm saying is, is as, as someone who's filling this out, I don't know, am I only supposed to pick one or?
Every page has three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if, if we want, if they, if we want them to know that if they feel all three are high or all three are low, then they have the right to, to pick that. But when I'm looking at this, I would think, well, there's three here. I can probably only pick one for each. And then the second page, can I only pick a low, medium, and high as well? Just because there happens to be three as well.
Yeah, I agree.
It's just a point of clarification.
Seen that on surveys before, they should have the language of how that should be. That's a good catch.
So I said, please use a scale for each question when responding to the following items, high, medium, or low. Does that help?
Maybe you could say the same score could be used for any question?
The same priority could be used for any question.
Jess is just trying to make sure that like on, on one page, they don't, one person thinks that they can only do one at high, one at medium, and one at low. That would skew the result.
I'm just thinking that that's how an analytical person was going to think about that, those two pages.
I don't see that.
Well, I can see it that way.
I could see people thinking that way. Yeah.
I see it that way.
Do you know, I need to.
Just the engineering me.
Oh, I gotta get them to choose one. No.
And then the other point I, I wanted to make, and this is more of a, maybe perhaps a reminder, not necessarily at this point in, in the, in the phase, but I think we need to bring back to the forefront how we talk about how security is a major concern for the district. So, security is only in here one time that I saw. And maybe we can have that in more clarifying questions once we know what the defined projects may be selected from the public. But my question is for the, the technology infrastructure, does that, is that truly just infrastructure? Or can that also tie to be able to secure PII for, for families and students in the district and staff as well?
Well, when we threw the numbers together for the infrastructure piece, I had a company bid out a section, actually all of our buildings for a certain amount of drops that were required to get our systems up to speed to current new levels going forward. So we have some additional dollars in that to do more than just some of the cabling. But that'd be determined, I guess, to see what, what those asks would be. You know, the question is where you stop with it, you know? And that does, I think that's a fair question to be asked, but I think you could definitely roll some security pieces into that. Jessica, I think you really can. I just didn't call it out in that regard, but it's more than, you know, we left them more vanilla for what? I want to promise something to somebody that I can't deliver.
Agreed, agreed. But I think if, if security is a, a piece of this, um, and, and that might be the intent, then that should be communicated as well because, I mean, we all know that as parents, you, you can go online and, and make payments to your school accounts or your kid's fees, lunch accounts, any of that. But if you're doing that, you want to know that your banking information or the credit card that you're using is secure.
I was just looking at the technology side, would that be applicable there?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Is, you know, to secure PII. If, if that is the.
I don't.
All things that we add to our system directly. It encompasses quite a bit when you think about that.
And I think, I mean, maybe we don't do that this phase, but then if this becomes one of the pieces of that, then we define that more. But I'm just saying it's food for thought.
All, all aspects of the, these proposals, safety is one of the major concerns in the referendum.
We certainly can, but that, if, if that is the, the case, then it should be in the messaging on the first page.
Please keep in mind that in all of our proposals, security and safety of our children is.
In staff and priority.
Is our main priority.
Yeah, just thinking back to the event we had a couple of months ago. I know there was a lot of comments on going off to a couple of different locations. Does that new gym improve that security for our children during a event? I don't know.
And I think to Steve's point, trying not to pigeonhole.
Too much.
Pigeonhole us, but I think making just a general comment perhaps on the front page, talking about, um, putting some of these recommendations forward, making sure that safety and security are paramount throughout the district. Something to that effect.
Well, can't you put that under the financial challenges on the second page? Instead, where you're increasing costs for transportation, fuel, utilities, tech. Instead, where you're increasing cost for transportation, fuel utilities, technical compensation, and add that, and add that word?
Good spot, yep. For the safety and security of the district. My, my third point was, is a little bit what we touched on earlier as well, but since the last page is a lot of open space, perhaps we could also solicit and say, if anyone is wishing to make donations, please mail to, and then put the Mozeney, how we have the Mozeney School District and address off in the corner. But then it could be, if we wanted to go to a specific fund or more, just clarifying it. But at least it's put out there that if somebody does want to make, or a business wants to make a contribution, here's where to do it. You never know. We got the space, why not utilize it? And my, my last point is, is being that we have our new superintendent in the room, has he had an opportunity to have eyes on this and give his feedback since he's going to be helping greatly to through this project?
I've read it online. As far as feedback, I haven't really provided any, because I'm just trying to get up to speed with exactly what we're looking at. But I think the questions that are there are kind of answering or providing you the information that you really need, which is, we need to zero in on what the community will support in terms of financial contributions.
I just wanted to make sure with your experience, if you've had any lessons learned that we might be missing some piece on this, or?
No, no, I think, it's, I, School Perceptions does an excellent job, so, you know, they, I think this covers a lot of what you're looking for. It's pretty standard to what I've seen in other areas as well.
I just want to add to Jess, the comment about page numbers. If you mail it, there needs to be a page number, because somebody might be like, am I missing a page? Do I have, have I answered everything?
Good.
I heard a great quote today. People have two decisions in life. Do I want to give grammatical advice, enforce grammatical changes, or do I want to have friends? So, I apologize. I thought it was great. I'm going to assure that with my employees, love the red pen on my documents. I know. Some people take it very personally, though.
You just described my life as a survey writer, because I write interviews all the time. All right. So, I want to be, I want to honor the suggestion about the donation. Where would you like me to place that? So, just so you understand, these are 11 by 17 panels.
Right, and they fold in half.
This, this, this page will be folded over.
And that's going to be the mailer that will go on them?
It'll be stapled, and then it'll be, it'll have a, it'll be stapled together with the return address symbol. So it's not, it folds over into a booklet that is paged through.
I mean, somewhere on the last page, I think that that is something that could be worked through with whoever gives the final approval from administration. Once you say, here's where the folds are going to be. And just somewhere on that last page, since there, since there appears to be some white space, I just think it would be great for a community member to know.
Or do you want it, or do you want it to be right there where we say, if you have questions or would like to make a donation, please call?
Yes. Yep, that works as well.
Great idea. I like it.
In fact, yeah.
Here's the QR code for a memo.
We have a PayPal.
Oh, we have PayPal.
So we can, you can create a QR code too.
I think there was.
Do we, we're not putting the picture of the, what it's going to look like on here? Do we take that off? Was it in the room? I'm just.
The rendering, the.
Right.
Yeah, by the time we added the three operational referendum questions, we were out of space, depending, meaningful.
But we could possibly put that now that we know this, on the website.
Yeah, right.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yep. That's where we're going to do that, FAQ and the image, yeah.
Perfect, okay.
And then you're adding page numbers?
Yes.
And if not, Diane on Busroads will drop them off on mailbox.
Got that, got that noted, yes.
Great work. It's my recommendation that the board approves this, this document as we discussed.
I had, yeah, I read somebody comments, I apologize. I'll make the motion to approve as, as updated.
Okay, we have a motion by Peters or a second?
I'll second.
A second by Amy. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you, everybody.
All right, well, I, I will very much look forward to presenting our findings from your community in May.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
We'll be in touch. All right, thank you.
Hey, we're moving on to item seven, special presentation. Seven A, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the American Legion Post 492 donation.
Yes, we have a special guest here. Thank you for attending here, Mary. And I am so honored to introduce Mary to the board and thank her so much for her work, particularly with our elementary students and middle school students. Very, very happy and welcome you to our committee meeting here this evening. And we'd like to recognize you with a picture. Any board members want to jump in? And Christie will take a picture of the presentation.
I'm a terrible picture person, but I'm up there.
Awesome, awesome.
Do you want to, want to keep going on what's with the rest of it then?
Sure, we can take the picture here and thank everybody for this work. And I know our interim special ed director, Mr. Sample, left the cart before.
Did we cash it before we approved? I'll make a motion to approve the donation.
Okay, so we have a motion by Peters or a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Donna. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you very much.
The email that I received had the wrong total. The complete total that we fundraised was over $3,000. But it was split between Everest and Mozeney. So the total is $1,830 for each school.
That's what we have here.
Okay.
Got it.
To be used for your special needs, children in elementary schools. Specifically, please. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have it listed in that, so thank you.
Okay, our next item is seven B, discussion, middle school staff.
All right, I've got two troopers here to present. So, every year, we have our book fair at the middle school. And it involves a lot of work with Mrs. Remendini, so Mrs. Remendini is here, she heads it up. And today, we want to spotlight that for you guys. And I have Briella Shrem and Ella Jacobs here to walk through their PowerPoint with you in regards to our book fair. So, ladies, if you want to take it away.
So this year, we had our annual Mozeney Middle School Scholastic Book Fair that was from February 26th to March 1st. Reading is a fundamental skill in all aspects of life, and our goal is to continue to foster a love for reading. One of the most important indicators to developing strong reading skills is when young children are read to or read and engage with books on a regular basis. Community members volunteer their time to help work for the book fair. Volunteers help by working in the cash register and helping customers. All middle school teachers who brought their classes to the book fair received $25 in scholastic dollars to be spent at the book fair for their classroom. This totaled just over $400 worth of books that were added to classrooms at MMS. This year, the profits from the MMS Scholastic Book Fair were also used to purchase books for the students in the, in Mozeney's 4K program and students in the daycares within our community. A total of 225 books were delivered to children within our district. Our purpose for donating books to our youngest readers is twofold. We want to provide all emerging readers with great books, and we also want to honor the memory of Anderson Strand, who loved books and loved to read with his parents. Books were delivered to Mozeney Preschool 3K and 4K and Mozeney Elementary School 4K on March 12th. Book delivery continued to the KM Check Center 4K site and three local daycares in Mozeney. Members of the Mozeney Middle School Student Senate helped with the, with the delivery of books. Each child got to pick out their own book. Enjoy your new books and keep reading.
So, just a big special thanks to Mrs. Remendini. She puts in a lot of time organizing, communicating with our community members to come in. I believe it was Mrs. Wysocki and Mrs. Reinschmidt you seen in that picture, that come in annually. And they work the cash register, they help with stocking the shelves. But a big round of applause for Mrs. Remendini, she does an awesome job. And then if you do happen to see Mrs. Gilbertson, she gave up her room for a week. So she kind of found a different location in the building, because we wanted to put that book fair in a spot that was a little bit easier access for the kids. So she was working off of a cart and in different rooms for the whole week. So, we do happen to see Melissa just say thank you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven C, discussion, technology annual update.
So many kids presenting. All right, I have a handout though, because I have it ready for your.
Chrissy, is there anything I need to do to make sure Megan sees these? Is it tied together or no?
I can share it with her.
I thought about that after the girls presented.
Oh, it is not.
No, I could see the girls' presentation on my thing. You guys did a good job.
Oh.
Briella, Ellie.
I suppose you can always follow from the agenda.
Yeah, I'm following on the agenda. Thank you all.
Yeah, I just shared it with Megan as well. Okay, so, here's my annual presentation. So, in technology, I kind of have two houses. So I have the curriculum side, which, so I have four goals every year. The curriculum side is pedagogy, instruction, curriculum, learning, leading. And then the other side is hardware, software, infrastructure, tech support, answering all the day-to-day stuff. So it's kind of split into those two different sides. I work with Rob on the curriculum side, and then I work with Steve on the operational side quite a bit. And Michelle with all of it. So, the day-to-day numbers, we create and manage 200, about 200, we have just less than 2,000 kids now, and 300 employees. Software management is becoming overwhelming. We have more and more software products every year. This year, we have 36 educational pieces of software that we manage, different kids are in different things. We have campus seesaw, that's just a couple of them. And the curriculum side, more and more things are going online. We have 22 operational systems, so not necessarily curriculum or content, but just the print servers, antivirus, Microsoft, Adobe, all of those things. In the last year, we had 2,822 help desk tickets that we closed.
How's that compared to last year?
Last year was just like 100 less, so it was actually really close. Cybersecurity and data security. So last year, we implemented multi-factor authentication. And what that means is, you put your password in and then you get the passcode also, so that's the second step. So we did that last year on Google. What we did this year is we implemented it on Skyward Student and Skyward Financial, which protects our biggest data warehouse. That's all of our financial information and all of our PII. We require all staff and now this year, students to change their password every year. In the past, students would have the same password from kindergarten to 12th grade, which is not okay in today's day and age. So, and we implemented systems so our younger grades can change it and still function. We have leveled filtering, a firewall, antivirus, endpoint detection and response. Securely Auditor, Aware and On Call, the principals deal with this a lot. What that securely does is it monitors all of our student accounts for depression, self-harm, suicide. And they actually get phone calls when, there's like automated things, and then if it gets to a point, it gets leveled up to a person actually calls. We don't get very many of those, but it does come in. Every couple of months, you get a phone call, and then they call the parents or call the police to go to make sure those students are okay. Know Before, cybersecurity training, so all staff, once a year, have to do cybersecurity training. It's just like bloodborne pathogen training and all those other ones. And we do monthly phishing tests, which staff have come to appreciate. So, they, Dan loves them.
Especially Class Link.
So it sends out a phishing email, and if you click on it, when you shouldn't, then you have to do an additional training.
Can we get a list of those who fail the most?
Well, I had one staff member say, like, I'm really annoyed that I have to do this training again. And I was like, I am too, like, no.
If they don't, ask Christie if she can open the email.
All right, I want to talk about E-Rate for a minute. That's a huge funding source for us. It's the federal funding for technology. It is broken down into two categories. And to simplify it, category one is basically internet. And we, it's not, when you get internet for a school, you can't just call Charter and be like, hey, hook me up. So it's a lot more complex. So our internet, our ISP, internet service provider is WISNET out of Madison. We renew that every year. And since it's out of Madison, Charter actually transports it here and hooks it up to the high school. And then from the high school, to get to the other buildings, we use TDS, which was originally Mozeney Telephone Company. And we still have a contract from them. And they have buried the fiber that runs between all of our buildings. Those contracts end next year, and so we renew that same process every year. I bring it to the finance committee about every April. Category two is infrastructure. So, we get a five-year budget. E-Rate was funded for another cycle, so it comes in five-year chunks. So the next cycle is 2026, and it will go five years out from that. So our district was allotted $336,000 for those five years. I've spent all of it, or I will by the end of next year. And most of that goes to, we did a firewall, we did switches this year, which actually is a big project next week. I'm going to send an email tomorrow to all staff saying they'll be rolling outages next week as we replace all the switches in the district. And then all our access points, so all the wireless access points in the whole district next year will be replaced. So those are the two biggest projects that that money goes to. So, the way E-Rate is, in our district, is about 50/50. So our district pays for 50% of the project and E-Rate pays for about 50%.
Christie, do we have any idea where you think that $336,000 will go to for 2026 to '31?
It really depends on if the referendum passes and what we do with all that stuff. One big project in that is cabling. So if you think of all the cables that run through our systems to the PAs, the fire, the emergency, all our access points, the doors, the HVAC, there's a lot of cables in the ceiling, and all those cables are Cat 5. And so, they will work with our new switches and our new access points, but five years from now, I think they're going to have to be updated. And if you think of all of that, it's a rework.
I misunderstood. I thought that E-Rate established the $336,000?
They did.
Okay.
They did, and so, but I don't know what our amount will be for our district.
Okay, that's what I'm.
I just know that they renewed the E-Rate.
I didn't know they gave you any kind of idea, like, how they handle inflation. Okay, no big deal.
I don't know yet.
Two years down the road.
Chromebook repairs, so one thing we're really proud of is we fix all of our Chromebooks in-house. So K4 is Chromebooks, there's a cart in each classroom, and the kid checks it out during the day and it doesn't go home with the student. In fifth grade, that kid takes the Chromebook home with them, it's checked out to them, and they get the same Chromebook year after year. Our plan moving forward is that fifth and ninth grade would get a new device and they would keep it for four years. These are our breakage rates since 2026, or 2016, I'm sorry, 2016, which is the first year we went one-to-one. So before that, we just had carts in classes, and that's the first year we started sending them home, which is also my first year in the district, which means I've been here for eight years. So, if you look, most of the repairs don't cost anything to the student. If they, if it's any sort of technical thing that went wrong with the Chromebook, we do not charge them, we fix it. The only thing we charge them for is if they break something on it, that they weren't handling it the way they should, or they weren't, they somehow, usually it's a broken screen. So if you look at that, this year alone, we had 71 students, we had to charge 58 of them were broken screens. So that's usually what it is. All right, our past project, so just to recap, we replaced all displays in the district. We replaced this TV, I don't know if you guys. We replaced this TV. I don't know if you guys noticed, you actually got a new TV here. The TV that was here went to the metal shop. And so we are, we've completed that project. The high school graphics lab, we updated two-thirds of those devices. They're high-end graphics computers. So they're the only Macs in the district. And we got those all installed in the last few weeks. We've installed additional security cameras. We replaced all fingerprint scanners at the beginning of this year. And you should notice when you go through the district, everybody's now wearing a badge. We didn't have that in the past. We had the fingerprints and then people didn't have to wear their badges. And now this gets them into the doors. We replaced all the auditorium sound light in the stage. We just finished that project in the last few weeks and the curtain people arrived today. So that was a big thing because our curtain was not fire resistant. And the insurance said we had to either coat it or replace it. So we replaced it because then the fire coating lasts a lot longer. So there there's people and there's 30 years of dust up there whenever that it's it's pretty dirty. No, I don't know when it was built, but. The football and track press box, the sound system is complete. We should be able to, that should be functioning for track this year. I don't even know that I told Trevor. It's up and running. So we just got it this week. We were testing it out. The phone system overhaul, we did that last year right at, actually it was spring break. So it was right after my presentation last year. We replaced all the phones in the district. And then this last fall, we did a cybersecurity audit with a federal agency. I wrote federal agency because their initials get a little ridiculous. All right, future projects that are coming up. Next year, the elementary laptops are being replaced. The elementary cafeteria, we're installing an AV system in there for large group meetings. They're the only building in the district that they can't have a large meeting because their library isn't quite big enough and their cafeteria doesn't have any TVs. So we're just putting some large displays up on the wall and some and a sound system. Switch replacement is happening next week. Wireless access points, we have signed that and we're planning for it. We have everything ordered to do next school year. The rewiring of the buildings is a project that Steve's discussing with the referendum, but upgrading the CAT cables. And then we're going to be begin replacing the fifth and ninth grade Chromebooks each year and then the kids would keep them. So we haven't done that in the past because we had that large amount from ECF where we replaced all the Chromebooks at once in 2021. And then we're going to continue improvements to cybersecurity. Specifically, me and Michelle are working on IP restrictions, meaning you can only do things when you're on our on our internet. So right now, you log into Skyward anywhere. But say you want to change the banking information, you have to actually be here on our Wi-Fi in order to change those settings. So that's a big project restricting what you can do when you're here versus when you're virtual.
Can. If there's staff that do work from home from the like the business office, get an AVPN in to be able to get behind that secure network?
Yeah, they they could, but right now we're going to set it up. So there's like you don't you don't need to print checks at home, even if you're working virtual. So you'd be able to only print checks if you were here. So kind of breaking that down to, well, if I really need to change our bank information, I'm going to have to go to work.
Okay, just wanted to see.
But if they're day-to-day stuff, they can just do it from home. So that's what's taking so long is dividing those things out.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. Generally speaking, what were the findings from the the audit?
It was a super large report and we went through it page by page and just changed little teeny settings here and there, you know, thanks to the server, thanks to our firewall. A lot of account settings we changed. So in general, we we did very well. They found certain, the biggest downfall we have is we allow staff members to download software on devices. But if we block that, it's an incredible amount of work. Every time we, every time they need something, we have to go and install it. So that's the one thing we're trying to tackle on how to solve that hole.
Okay. And my other question was in terms of the cybersecurity with the firewall. So when someone brings in their own device, how how does that restrict them? Is it they obviously cell phone data, they have access to anything and everything?
Yeah.
And but then when they're on the school Wi-Fi, then they're restricted to certain, certain things are off limits.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Does it have any restrictions like on time usage or anything like that?
No, but like, for example, all students are usually don't go on our Wi-Fi because Snapchat doesn't work on our Wi-Fi. Snapchat and TikTok are blocked on our Wi-Fi, so they just use their cell phone data. Younger kids use it, like a lot of younger kids don't have a cell phone. They just have one of their parents' old phones. So they go on our Wi-Fi and they can do, I mean, they can still get to YouTube and Facebook and anything they need to, but they can't do Snapchat.
Any other questions?
Keep it that way.
Thank you.
Item A, public forum. And from my understanding, we have nobody. Okay, so we'll move on to item nine, the consent agenda. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda if nobody is bringing anything out of the consent.
Nothing out. I don't know if we want to wait till discussion, just on some comments or some discussion we had or?
Sure, sure. Okay. So you're making a motion?
No.
Okay. All right, I would need a motion to approve.
We'll make the motion to approve the consent agendas.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kelly. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Donna. Discussion?
The the main item of, Megan, you don't mind if I, I think you had said it was because of the way you were feeling, you're okay if I brought this up.
Yeah, please, please go on.
We we had a lot of discussion on health insurance and for the next, our April meeting, continuing to look at even more options. Whether it's, I I forget the term Greg, that your old district was pre, your current district, but like a consortium. Cooperative. Cooperative, that's on the table. Making adjustments to health savings accounts slash reimbursements for employees who don't take our health insurance. Just whatever with these massive deficits. I think you you took what I, when we started to talk, did you say you shared it with maybe the other two committees?
Great question. Actually, that same topic was discussed at the same time with the finance or with the personnel committee. So we will be discussing how perhaps in April, we could have a joint committee meeting to look at things to make sure.
Or possibly just bring it to the full board.
Possibly have a committee to the whole.
We just got to be looking at.
Okay.
Peter, and I did go to a conference and the convention on, I think what Greg is talking about, the consortium with the health insurance. But I knew you were into this and I knew it wasn't, the timeline wasn't going to work.
It might be too late. We don't know.
But I thought for next year, you know, probably start working on it earlier and see what, there were two school districts that had some really great success with doing that. So.
I'm excited with the work with the committee and will continue to look at out-of-the-box thinking in terms of how we how we continue to provide great benefits for our our people and to also keep that within budget. So yes, we appreciate all the comments from board members on both committees and look forward to a committee of a whole discussion at the next meeting as well. So thank you.
Got it. Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie, go ahead.
But that's okay. I just want to, and Michelle was in the same meeting, so feel free to pipe in. We did ask him free to look at entering the consortium. My friend is part of consortiums in other districts. Right now, our usage is just too high, so nobody wants us in. But it doesn't mean, those consortium meetings with the district that would be closest to us, they're having that at the beginning of part of April, I believe she said. So we may not know in time, but she is banking that we, they won't pick us in. But that doesn't mean maybe at the ninth hour, they they might. But I'm not hopeful for it this year, but if we can get our usage done, maybe in the future. But we can certainly, we certainly have that on for a possibility.
That was, yep, that was one of the things we talked about and adjustments to staff not taking our plan, how that could play into. Those are just ideas for a lot of things. I swear there's a third one. I don't remember.
So we do have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item 10, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the monthly voucher list.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Peter. Is there a second? A second by Kelly. Roll call both, please.
Hansen?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Cassandra Zebrow?
Yes.
Kelly Zebrow?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, motion will pass. Item 11, discussion and possible decision on the acceptance of the monthly treasurer's report. I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Okay, we have a motion by Peter. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Kelly. Roll call both, please.
Kelly Zebrow?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Cassandra Zebrow?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, motion will carry. Item 12, O Business, 12A, discussion ad hoc safety committee updates. Jess?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So the safety committee met on Tuesday, March 5th. And just a few of the highlights from the meeting is that we had been discussing the last few months, the updated guidance to ensure that there is more accountability to the administration and the staff if there should be any false accusations made against staff by students or other staff members. So what we did was we worked with myself and Mr. Way worked with Neola. And you will see later in our board packet that we have a couple of updates with the threatening behaviors for staff policies. And addition to that, so giving the administration that backing and some more clarity with that, we're also asking that that's going to be updated on the school website as long, as well as being included into the student handbook that's going to be signed by the students who are enrolling in school each year. So that was one major update. Additionally, we also got another update from Chief Grams on the hiring process of the additional SRO that is currently being done. And it's a bit of a holding pattern at the moment, simply because we need to come to an agreement with the city on the SRO MOU, which we will be discussing next. We also had some discussions with instructional programs and we got updates from Mr. Way and Ms. Schmidt regarding the in-services for staff that included a little bit of training for the run, hide, fight that was done by Mr. Helverson and Mr. Grooby, as well as staff had the option to attend self-defense classes as well as CPR training as options. Now, the door security that has been trying to be accomplished for the classroom doors, we've run into a bit of a snag because of ADA compliance. So we are trying to figure out different strategies and ways to work around that and make sure that there are ways to potentially get the doors secure, if not for the time being, potentially just going to teaching with classroom doors shut and locked. The concern of the Cruski Center entrance is also continuously being discussed. And the committee has decided to hold conversations with the stakeholders of the swimming pool as well as some of the clubs that like to gather in those areas during the day and talk about potential, let them know the potential security concerns as well as have them be a part of the solutions that we can bring forth soon and perhaps integrate with the referendum if that happens to go forward. But we want to have those discussions as soon as possible and potentially change those schedules. Additionally, then recently on March 7th and 8th, I believe it was, Mr. Helverson, Mr. Grooby, Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Kaiser all attended the safety conference at Wisconsin Dell. So at our next meeting, we're looking forward to any updates that they may have had from that convention. And we also had success in getting additional funds through a grant for digital maps to aid in law enforcement so that should there be another situation that we can utilize those maps better to to local EMS and law enforcement. And then finally, we discussed a, we had a debriefing of the February 1st bomb threat incident. And with that, the 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 administration had a debriefing with the community resources and the police initially. And then with those, they also had some for building. And what we're trying to do is make sure that those takeaways are going to be integrated into our overall safety plan for each building and for the district as a whole. But continuing to have conversations for continuous process improvement and communication to families and staff going forward. And that is all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jess? Okay, Ron?
I'd like to comment on the policy. We're experiencing an uptick in reports of uncivil, threatening and behaviors towards administrators and staff that we need to take a strong stance on, that we will not tolerate disrespectful, threatening, unsafe behavior towards anyone in this district. And I really appreciate the board taking this very seriously like we have, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item 12B, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the additional school resource officer SRO contract. If you do remember, we tabled this last month. So we do need a motion to bring it off the table.
We'll make a motion to bring the SRO MOU off the table.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jess. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Peter. Any questions on that? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. All right, we can now discuss or we should make a motion first before we discuss?
Well, has this gone through legal review?
Do not know that answer.
Well, does Rob know the answer?
We do have not brought it through legal. I I don't know what our standard operating procedure is. Could be the approval of this pending legal. Oh, but they don't have so many changes, I'm sure.
And it could take a while.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you want to handle?
I don't.
We had a two-week timeline to work with and as stated, it's held up the hiring process for the city.
So moving forward.
Well.
How should we?
We took it off the table to discuss. These are the items, I take it marked in red, are the changes that we wanted to see. I guess this is going to postpone.
Yeah, and I don't know what kind of timeline the city has.
I recommend going through, making sure the verbiage is to your standards. We've spent a lot of time. Thank you for folks that have spent a lot of time on this, board members. Chief, thank you, everyone. I recommend going through, approving what you see and having in that motion, that approval, pending legal approval as well. It's a good idea to have legal look at any and all contracts. I do want to stress that we had a very open, this is just my experience this year, very open dialogue, a trusting environment where all parties involved have been very much putting ideas forward. So certainly, I understand for any contract, could be your bus contract, I'm not sure our protocol, if there's in policy, that's something to think about as well. Do we have legal look at all all contracts? It's a good question. I'm not saying it's.
And I don't think it has to be for everything, yeah. Maybe maybe I should follow question of what we're amending. Is that what what's on the record as we stand? The 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 SRO agreement we have with the city as we speak, are these changes to that agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
So we go with the assumption that probably then.
Right.
No, it was fine, yeah. But I do have some changes to this.
Keeping friends.
I'd like to keep this moving forward. I need to put.
Yeah, no, I mean, just it's just grammatical stuff.
Not do we want to rush it?
Oh, it's grammatical.
It's just grammatical.
Okay, so right now, I guess, it is coming back in two years. I mean, the red and there the city in the district.
Get us into a legal.
Right, well, and and.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Jess.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed SRO MOU with the city of Mosne. With the proposed changes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jess. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Amy. Discussion?
Okay. Scroll up there a little bit. Oh, oh, just a little. Okay. Now, let's, I got to see what's going on here because this is being cut. Okay, so.
Page number.
Okay, you got to go up a little. You went down, I think.
Under what section, Amy, maybe?
Okay, see that where it says page four? That should actually be at the top. Okay, see that where it says page four? That should actually be at the top of the page. See where it says School Resource Off, you know, page one, two, and three is okay. But that little section right there needs to get moved up to the top. It's a formatting thing?
Thank you.
And it, that carries through the rest of the document, so five is wrong, six is wrong, seven is wrong. No, I don't know if it's possible. I'm not an expert at this. I don't know if it's because it's in this format where it's showing the comments.
Sure.
I know that does something different, but we'll definitely get that.
I don't know.
I think it's just in the format.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm also looking at it on Google, and it's a Word document, normally.
I think that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
Anything else, Major?
Yeah, six B in the red where it, there were some changes. Okay, so right near the end where it says the city acknowledges agrees?
Yeah.
Should that be the city acknowledges and agrees?
Yep. Makes sense.
And then if you go to the end where twelve is. Oh, okay, stop. Yeah, see that twelve headings should actually be on the next page, otherwise you've got twelve at the end and then.
And that could be the formatting thing.
So, yeah, so just making sure that it's formatted correctly.
Amy, I'm gonna jump in. This isn't a grammatical change, but a comment that you had, Diane, go up a little bit, the four twelve, something about the date. This actually is only good through June of 2025, so this is only about a fifteen-month contract. From what I just saw. I don't know, must be more.
Oh, and weren't we gonna do a two-year?
It said two-year.
Two-year.
I saw something.
But see, in the very first pages, I think when you're dating.
Well, it's for a term of January twenty, through June thirty of 2025.
Yeah, the first page does say for two years.
Automatically renews unless we say, so if we don't have it as an agenda item next June, it automatically renews on July first.
To June thirty of 2025. Okay.
So it's early year and a half contract, not two-year.
Wow, and actually, the official date of the agreement's not gonna be until Rob signs it tomorrow.
And actually, the signatures, it would be our mayor, Mayor Jacobson needs to sign, so it needs to go to
Yep.
the city for their.
And their meeting is in.
Signatures as well.
People in.
Okay.
Which is why it was paramount to get this updated for the ninety percent solution tonight.
Right, correct.
I'm okay with leaving it as it is, and if the city wants to change the date on there, I would be okay with it, but.
I'll go through some of the major updates if you don't mind for everybody, but it's a lot of what we discussed. So of course, this was a one-year contract, but we decided to make it a two-year, at least for the very start, because it's so much of a work in progress, and we still, it's gonna take time to get the other two SROs onboard anyway. So that was one of the major changes with that first page. On page three, on three Bravo, it talks about the city's chief of police, where they're designated, will directly communicate with the district's administration to help minimize SRO overtime hours by implementing stagger duty hours whenever feasible. So part of this came in to question when, should we have a situation if there's inclement weather? How do we want to press forward? Because the city thought that the district should take responsibility of funding the salaries for those three SROs if we decide to close school. Now, it's possible, though, that to me, I don't want to pigeonhole the school district or the city, because what if there is a major accident if it's inclement weather and they need to pull them? So I think it comes down to, we need to ensure that there's a conversation between school administration and the chief of police and work with that, but then additionally, that may help with planning for school events, if there's requests for that from administration, for sporting events, or for school dances, things like that. So we can just help to flex that schedule a little bit by that communication piece that's added in there. And then on also saying page three E, that actually encompasses more of that snow time, but I actually just covered both of that with my comments. Now, on page four, this talks about what we had also discussed in our last meeting, in the event that the city is unable to provide an SRO, the district, due to circumstances beyond its control, that we're not, they're not being considered in default of the contract.
When I read that, I was wondering, what if we've given them money for like a squad car?
Which we have, or we will.
Not yet.
Well, we will.
Yeah.
Is the only, is I.
We will be.
Yeah.
Trying to pull it all together, thinking, are they really in default if we've, I'll just say we paid for something and then we had to pay ahead?
Right.
That's where the relationship trust has to come through and get our money back.
Well, it comes down to that billing and ensuring, as Kevin pointed out the last meeting, that it's truly a seventy-five and a twenty-five, which we got clarity in this contract to make sure that it's truly that. Since we have the SROs for nine months of the year and the city has them for.
Right. And so, like, what you're alluding to also is what you talked about with the flexibility with being at the dances and, you know what I mean, some sporting events and.
Right. If there's times where there's not a concern, and if it's a school dance and there's no rumor going around, and we don't feel there's a need for an SRO and school administration has it, great, we don't eat them, but if there is, then we eat them. But then there's that flexibility, perhaps during one day or something that they, one of them can flex their hours to, to help minimize that.
But now, I'm kind of leaning to what Peter says, with the squad car and some of the equipment in there.
Yes, and so.
Are we losing money? The heck is it?
Very last page.
The dollars?
Yes.
It's on the very last page, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, we're looking.
Oh, you gotta fold it over.
That's right.
Okay.
So, yes. If you don't mind, I'll just go through the rest of the contract.
Yeah, that's where it gets a little touchy. I mean, do we worry about it or do we not?
So, and there's no other significant changes on the remainder of the contract, other than it specifically spells out on page five that both parts, that we will have a seventy-five, twenty-five. And going forward after this contract, if there's gonna be additional equipment requests, that it comes to the board with a bid. So that we're actually seeing the estimates of the equipment versus just.
Getting that.
Yeah. So that will be the request going forward. Now, everybody knows that I am a prudential person and a penny pincher. That said, what I kept in mind with this mindset, but I am open to either way, is the comment that Kevin made previously, and Michelle had somewhat confirmed that there is no documentation that the school district has previously reimbursed the city or contributed to the cost of the equipment of our current SRO for all these years. So, that said, we went through with Chief Grahams, all of these items line by line for the current proposal that we have. And the one thing that we thought, but it's more of a Mrs. Help question, is that when it comes to the request of the SRO monitors, granted it's three thousand, but it's still three thousand dollars. I don't, I'm thinking that comes down to cabling, and a tough book can integrate with any monitor? Yeah. So I don't know that we need to spend three thousand dollars when we probably already have extra monitors in-house for all three SRO offices. And so, if you give the blessing on that, that's the one item that can probably take it off, if the district can say, yes, we will cover that. Not in terms of cost, but we will supply it and take care of the hookup to the tough book. Okay, okay. So it all adds up. But other than that, we went through everything else with Chief Grahams and got some updates to the costs of the of this squad car.
Yeah.
Any questions?
One question I'd like to know is, are we gonna get like a copy of the bills that the city gets for these items? I mean, because everything seems so rounded off, and it's like, you know, is that.
Budget numbers.
I think we could easily have that communication channel where we get updated bills, and maybe, well, we could incorporate that into our regular finance report or something like that, and that would be helpful.
That's a good idea.
Yes.
Sounds like a good plan. Good question. Or in, you know, maybe a separate subsection of our voucher list that would list just these and show how the original bill was three thousand and we paid for seventy-five percent, although I know we're covering a lot at a hundred percent, but something that, just to build.
Checks and balances.
Yeah, we need that, because we did not have that before.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That would help clean up if we ever paid for anything, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Does anyone, yeah, does anyone need clarification on the squad car?
I did notice that. Okay, Jess, I'm gonna ask you.
Have you bought a new car lately?
This is a, I know, I know. I don't think we're going to avoid the lovely inflation.
Well, that's what I kind of figured, yes, because that's what I showed. So instead of, yeah.
I'd be shocked if it didn't.
Okay. The only thing I'm going to do is just make a friendly amendment to my motion, simply because if we're going to eliminate the three thousand dollars for the SRO monitors and perhaps note, or have it removed, and just have the agreement that we will supply those for the tough books and the office, making sure it comes down to the cabling.
Is a tough book a police device? Nothing we would have in-house.
It's like a.
It is, sir. It is, sir, yep.
Thank you.
There's a docking station with that, and that's what we utilize in our squad cars.
Just want to make sure we didn't have something in-house.
No, it transitions nicely between their vehicle and the office, and so, because the, our current SRO didn't have a computer to work with for quite some time, and unfortunately, it was limiting him, so.
Okay, so you went to make an amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Amy, you're good with the updated amendment?
Yeah.
Caught that, Amy? The other Amy?
This, my recommendation to approve the SRO contract.
It is, we got it first and second.
Yes, we do.
With the changes.
With the changes.
I didn't know if I had my recommendations there.
Nope, you're good, you're good.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. I just want to extend a thank you to everybody in this room. I think we have developed a great partnership. I know I feel that way. And first and foremost, I want to extend an apology. Last month at your meeting, I could not attend. We had in-house training with the DA's office in Croninawater on a joint operation, so I apologize. I, I, I just wanted to be here to answer any questions. I think this is gonna be a great partnership moving forward. I know we can make it work and do the best we can, because we have good communication lines. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item thirteen, New Business. Item thirteen A, Discussion and Possible Decision on the Approval of the Fall 2024 Start College Now and Early College Credit Program Applications. And again, this was another updated information that was in your black folder, so not in your original board packet. Because this one will include the summer requests.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helverson. Any words before we go to that approval?
There are some additional ones for the summer that got added that we utilize the Start College Now process for.
Okay.
We pay for those out of alternative funding to reuse the partnership, so, but they wanted to utilize the same process at NTC for it, so that's why I see those.
I've seen a lot of the auto mechanics, so now getting that, we'd be able to have that here, correct? All right, is there any questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I will make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Amy. Any other discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item thirteen B, Discussion and Possible Decision, Approval of the Mozeni School District Joining Lacrosse Co-op Team.
Okay, at this time, Trevor.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm gonna talk to you some data. I'll start with the history, considerations, data, and future of lacrosse co-op for both boys and girls for next spring. First little bit of history, lacrosse has been a club sport throughout Wisconsin for many, many years. Last year in December, about a year ago, the WIA approved an addition of lacrosse and sanctioned it as a sport in Wisconsin. Lacrosse is the first sport which has been introduced to both genders since the addition of soccer in nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-three. The Wasau School District and DCFR School District last year agreed on terms, they created a co-op in lacrosse, and the teams starting with spring, which is actually right now, they started practice a couple of weeks ago. Paperwork for lacrosse was due for this co-op last May first, and Mozeni was not part of that co-op. Lacrosse is a growing sport in Wisconsin, and it's gaining a lot of popularity. It would be, it would provide opportunities for both boys and girls in grades twelve, or nine through twelve. Currently, the home games and practices for the girls' team take place at Wasau East High School. The home games and practices for the boys' team take place at DCFR's high school. Important note, if we decide to do the co-op, this would require athletes to provide their own transportation to all games and practices. The cost of each team, boys and girls, would be split into, for all three districts, so we share it one-third each. If we have one player or fourteen, it is still split between the districts. So currently, for a good reference, the girls' hockey program, we play twelve thousand dollars for our five girls. Wasau East has one girl, and they also pay twelve thousand dollars for that co-op. The co-op would be the only team in District Two. So one of the things to consider is that most of the games are down south in Madison and Milwaukee area. That makes up seventy-two percent of the teams currently in Wisconsin. The other twenty percent of the teams are in the Green Bay and Appleton area. We would be the only team in this area, and there are two teams up north, and that's Superior in Hudson. Questions that may arise? What would this do to other sports in Mozeni? Would we be offering too many sports for our school size? Currently, we offer three sports in the fall for girls. We offer three sports in the winter for girls. For girls in the spring, this would increase our sports number to five. So is that something that we want to consider, because would that deplete some of the other sports as far as softball, track, or soccer? And not have us to have the ability to have a JV team? We did do an interest survey for all of our kids. This would be kids in eighth grade through eleventh grade, which will next year be ninth through twelfth. There were twenty-three students that expressed interest in lacrosse. There were, would it be twelve, or sorry, six twelfth graders, five eleventh graders, six tenth graders, and six ninth graders. So that's a total of twenty-three students, twelve girls, eleven boys, pretty, pretty balanced. Currently, the kids that played lacrosse in the club, where there were two girls of the, of the twelve, two girls currently played, ten have never played before, and of the boys, one play and ten have never played before.
Trevor, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
On that survey that shows the fourth, so you don't, that's only high schoolers that were surveyed?
Correct.
Because if a child was in seventh grade right now, under the two-year commitment, they could play in that second year. They're gonna say, if they're finishing seventh grade right now.
Right.
This wouldn't start until next year.
Correct.
They'd be in eighth, and then they, so that, that was.
Right. And that's another thing, too, if we decide to join the co-op next year, it would, it would renew for two years.
Yes.
So it's not, just because they have it this year, we would just add the second year.
I just wanted to point out, there is a significant amount of middle schoolers that would want to play in ninth grade. I know that, because I drive around with some of them. So, just wanted to throw that out. These numbers don't include kids that could be eligible under our motion tonight if we make one.
Correct.
What needs to happen if we want to make this a co-op, first of all, Mozeni along with DCFR and Wasau, all the boards have to agree for us to all be in this co-op together. The current co-op schools would have to, or the current co-op schools would have to approve us to come into that. And the paperwork for this is due on May first of this year, for us to be able to join for next year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
How many kids are on a JV? I don't know.
It sounds like they're gonna have a JV, JV two. It sounds like they're gonna have a JV, JV two.
Yeah, because you could have a varsity in JV, so.
But how many, like, how many players?
Megan, your kids play, any idea?
What's it like?
Eighteen?
My kids, I think, I think the big thing with lacrosse is, of course, you want to give every child an incentive to stay in our district, right? The cost of the co-op, if you look at the cost of Storm, so if one kid chooses to leave the district to play lacrosse because we don't operate, we just paid for the co-op itself, right? Eleven grand, twelve grand, whatever. So my son just started the lacrosse, intro to lacrosse. They're doing a big, heavy push for it at Everest. He's not interested, but I will tell you that majority of the kids there were actually Mozzoni hockey kids. Mozzoni hockey are youth hockey players, and so I believe it would be something that would really strongly, you know, Mozzoni is a very strong hockey town, always has been. And a lot of those kids would play lacrosse in the off-season because it's a similar sport, and it would keep their, you know, keep them in shape, you know, throughout off-season, I guess. So I, needless to say, I will definitely be supporting it. I think we should do anything we can to get kids in our district and to stay in our district.
Trevor, the question we're asked, like, on basketball, you have, you know, how many with hockey, five, start, you had, you want at least ten.
So there's ten, ten people on the field at one time?
Thank you. Finding like thirty on a roster, I can't find.
I would say like twenty.
You need good, to make a team, twenty, okay.
Here it says men's lacrosse, ten players on the field, women's lacrosse, twelve players on the field.
Are they also responsible for their own transportation to the games?
Yeah, that was on there.
And equipment.
Well, the twelve thousand probably includes the, includes the.
It's paid for the coaches, it's transportation, it's usually uniforms, but they have, they usually have a booster club, yep.
And how many players do Wasa and Everest have currently? Do you have enough?
They just started, so I have no idea.
Oh, they just, oh, okay.
I saw a picture of the girls' team, and it wasn't a massive amount. But they had pictures of like our girls on it, but I know right now they can't play, so.
How do we solicit to find out the interest?
I sent out a survey to all the students.
Okay, so did this just go to students? And because we know the other half of that equation is, are the parents also supportive and willing to transport? Because that's, I mean, if they're not, I mean, nobody can say, I'm interested, I want to play, but if mom and dad are, we don't have time to schedule whatever. So I want to know, are these real numbers?
Well, they're real numbers.
Well, see, and the other thing, Jess, to your point, you know, when a Storm came into this years ago, I mean, that took a lot, a long time to develop. And they had a big booster following because they raised a lot of money. You know, that, that comes into play, too. You know, right now, we have no field, no place to even have a, you know, the parents, are they gonna want to haul their kids at the Wasa East? Or DCEvers all the time for practice?
I think a lot of these families are already part of the club team and are doing it.
Club. You know.
Well, if you want to get a scholarship, I'm guessing you don't just do club, you better be on a high school team.
Right.
And perform against, so that's just my, obviously, I'm.
Well, and I have kids who are figure skaters, and I know for a fact that the Storm is not getting our ring. They are the last, I think they get it even after the figure skaters, right? So those kids are already putting in the dedication to go to marathon, and, and, I mean, they are two similar sports, I would say. And really, if you went and looked, if you watched the Storm games this year, it's really a beautiful thing to see these kids who are from different schools, all kind of coming together on a shared purpose. And it's like, you know, it gave me goosebumps watching them win. It was cool. So I think it, it also opens up the opportunity when we're looking at a time in, of mental health and kids who need to have at least one person in a building that they connect to, maybe that person that they're gonna connect to isn't in Mozzoni. But it could be another kid who's sitting in DCEvers, or East, or West, or whatever, right? And that will improve their mental health substantially.
I talked to a father today about this. His son's in seventh grade, plays club lacrosse. Kind of wanted to talk to him about, you know, two years from now for his child, what, how the impacts would be. He said one of the things I was talking about at a, like a club meeting, he doesn't know if there's a gray area based on where he lives within our district. He might have to, he's wondering if would his son have to be part of the Stevens Point Club team?
It depends on where he's.
Like WIA rules on that. But then, he said the gray area is, he's already part of the Wolf Pack as a club, so that might, like, get rid of that gray area? He didn't know. So the point for him is, if we make a decision tonight for Wasa, his son might have to go to Point to play. And then we would have to do this again.
So what you're saying is he would choose to enroll in Stevens Point just to play lacrosse?
It's a decision that his family is already pondering.
Well, the questions I hear, Peter, I don't think that it's whether we support it or not. As far as financially, it's like Diane said about club, and the money was there for the Storm.
Right.
The money was there. Where is this money going to come from? And do they have to travel to Green Bay?
Yep.
And to Milwaukee, and to Madison to play games?
And the answer is if we have one kid that signs up, we owe twelve thousand dollars.
Correct.
If we have two kids that sign up, we still owe twelve thousand dollars.
I understand that completely.
So we don't have any money unless one of our kids sign up. We don't have to pay a thing unless the kid signs up.
Correct.
But I, I think.
Incorrect. If we, if we join the co-op and we have zero kids, we still have to pay.
Yeah. And I would like to see a little bit, I mean, we didn't just, the Storm just didn't come overnight. I mean, I think there's a lot more that needs to be developed within this. You know, do we, will we possibly have facilities that we could house here later? I don't think it's just something we just throw out there and approve it tonight and going forward without, like Jessica brought up the parents. You know, these kids might be interested, but then all of a sudden, they're gonna come home and their parents are really, what?
My only comment is we received a letter, email, you received it from a parent.
Yep.
Daughter's a junior.
Correct.
This decision is made, her daughter won't play next year. And she's made that commitment that her daughter would play. I just want to point that out.
I understand that. I understand that. But I just, I just don't think it's a decision we should just jump into without learning other aspects of what it would be to get into a sport like this, because we don't have the facilities right now.
We don't need them. It says right there, we don't need them.
Right, but eventually, what if they, what if the two teams or two schools don't want us to join?
Then, then I'm assuming all the twelve thousand dollars from other kids are gonna be coming to us.
But what if we have enough to provide our own team? We don't have the facilities.
We get out of it in two years.
And you're gonna have kids going.
We get out of it in two years.
Possibly to Milwaukee on a school night? I'm just saying, you know, we gotta think what's.
I'm just looking at three and a half million dollar deficits. What are we doing to bring families in and not lose families? This is the, probably the top growing sport in the United States.
And I'm gonna say it's wrong. I just don't think it's something we should just jump into right now. That's just my, but I'm, I'm only.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve us joining the, with the Wasa co-op.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Peter, and a second by Megan. Further discussion?
Yes, I, I would like to know, Trevor, what, what and when, again, do we have to make this?
Tonight.
No, May.
And A, you had to bring it?
We have till May first.
So we got April, yeah. I think we need more information.
When do they, their school districts?
So that's what I was gonna say. We have to find out when their boards meet.
Right.
Hopefully, they meet in April next month.
Right.
And then we would have to inform them.
There's two meetings in April.
Yeah, it's only.
Oh, yeah, we have two.
Yeah.
We would have to inform them that our intent is to do that so they can sign off on it.
Correct.
So they can approve it as well.
What more are we gonna learn? What are we looking for?
Well, so we reach out to the MCA. You know, we've got all these fields developing back here. What's the potential growth for that? You know, I just don't like the idea that our kids have.
We wouldn't worry about that in two years. This is a two-year commit, this isn't a lifetime commitment, Diane.
Okay, so that's a good question. So then when we start this, then when does lacrosse start? And we're not starting for two years?
Next, if we agree tonight or in April, our students can't play until next spring.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And that's where I'm pointing out also, the survey didn't include seventh and eighth graders that could be part of that.
Okay.
But I, I think you need to have a solid commitment from parents and students that they will permit to it.
Well, I do know that, that we at least have one boy and two girls.
That's what he's saying, that's what I'm hearing, too.
And I would tell you, we have one sitting in seventh grade, too, so.
Okay. Well, the twelfth graders, obviously, they'd be.
They could enjoy it.
This is, this is, this is for next year.
Oh.
We didn't have to survey any seniors.
So you did survey eighth graders.
It was eighth graders, third, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
So, but here's the thing, have we truly, if we know who these students are, are we sending the forms home to the parents and getting a parent's signature?
That's a great point.
And getting their commitment, true commitment to this.
Yeah, that, I would be.
Because that's the data that you need. But then additionally, is the district just paying twelve thousand and that's it? Are you saying that's the only cost the district?
What I'm saying is the twelve thousand dollars is what we pay for hockey. I don't know what the cost would be for lacrosse.
So that is a piece that we need to know. What is the comparsion cost?
The other piece that I think we really need to know is look at a lacrosse schedule. So they know how many times they're going to Green Bay, how many times they're going to Milwaukee, how many times.
Some informational packets sent to the parents.
See, this is kind of your commitment.
And what their cost is going to be and what they're responsible for.
Well, they, they wouldn't have any, well.
Yes, they would. They have to have their.
Equipment.
They probably have that because they're already part of the club, is my only comment, except for new families, new ones, yeah.
New ones, huh? New ones, I think.
No, I think it's a great idea. I do. I think it's a great idea.
We just have to make sure you're not conflicting with other sports so that the parents and the kids know that it's not going to truly interfere with the other sports.
And it might, but, but if that's the best sport for that child, that's the best sport for that child. And I don't want our coaches pressuring that kid.
To give up.
Giving them a guilt trip because they picked a sport that's better for them.
Okay.
I don't like that excuse.
Okay, so any other information that you want to get to Trevor?
Trevor, like I said, the schedules, the, um.
The cost, all the information that's fair quality.
May I interject?
Yes.
I recommend, I recommend, these are wonderful questions and looking for information. I recommend that we put together a little Google Doc and have an opportunity to have this information that you're looking for ahead of time so that we can prepare and be at the most prepared for you to make this important decision. We email that to all families with current kids in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade. We could, if that's the board's direct, direction.
Sure. Because again, we do meet twice a year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we do have a motion.
Well, and another thing just to bring up is that, you know, you have to look at the sport climate of today. If you haven't been to an athletic event, come, and you'll see, these parents are wild. You don't think that they would drive their kid down to Milwaukee, down to Chicago?
They're already, yes.
I mean, you have to.
The families I know are already traveling a ton for it.
Well, the families, they don't have to travel.
I mean, these parents, you would be.
I was gonna say, they don't have to drive their kid to Milwaukee.
Nothing I've ever seen in my life.
They're taking the bus, right?
Yeah.
But they still are gonna jump in their car and go watch.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion, and we have a second, but we should, we probably put it to Jess.
So wait, what do we do with that? Do you want us to pull that?
What do you mean, pull that?
Well, table.
It's up to you. You made the motion.
Well.
We, I think it'd be important to know how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we need more information.
Amy, help me? I think, I think maybe now is not the right time to. How do I get on the motion?
Well, we could just vote on it.
Make a motion to amend and, and a motion to table or postpone.
But then what happens in April, I don't think it's rough that.
Then you can.
You can make another motion after that.
I still could?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that the, the winning side doesn't block me from making the motion.
Okay, so we have.
There's rules on that. And we will. That's why I'm a little nervous here.
Yeah, retract it or rescind it.
Rescind it.
I'm gonna have to bribe board members to bring it back. I, I want to rescind it.
Okay.
Megan, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So now what's the motion is to bring back months?
There is no, there is no. Table, table.
So you want schedules, costs?
No, motion to postpone till next month.
There you go.
Schedules and costs.
And like another survey sent out. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you.
I got that.
Thank you. That's easy. I, I realize this is the perfect item in the, our, our, looking at our pillars and everything, but right now, we're kind of behind the gun on the decision.
You don't want to board on something that there's still.
Because otherwise, we'd wait two years for kids who might, yeah.
But we do need a little more information.
But, yeah, this is great, great conversation.
It is a conversation, yeah.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, now we're.
All right, so we're on to thirteen C, discussion and possible decisions, and the update of board policies. Now, this is all in your board packet as well. And you will see there are some new policies, so those will need a second reading. Otherwise, all the other ones would be approved tonight with the reading for the revisions. So unless anybody has any questions on the updates and new policies, I would seek a motion.
Motion to approve or motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Here we have a motion by Jess, a second by Amy. This will be to approve, and then some will come back next month.
Yeah, we'll write in the new ones. For the second reading back.
Brand-new ones, yes. Okay?
That's what I'm marking.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. And again, any of these can come back at any time if you're reading through these.
All right.
And have questions? Yes, you can bring them back. Item fourteen, other reports. Wasby, Kelly.
Yes, I have, we have, coming up will be in April, the new school board member gathering. We will have one of those, and it's online, April twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, otherwise the meeting itself, April seventeenth, seven o'clock in the marathon. And then in May, we're gonna have a spring workshop. That's all I have.
Item fourteen B, CISA nine, Donna.
Okay, um, okay, I have some notes on here. One of our, our former students who works at CISA nine, Aaron Truax, is, shared a presentation on reasons employees stay at the district. Would it be beneficial maybe to have her come and, or did she bring it to the administrators at your meeting, Rob?
I have a meeting tomorrow with Aaron Truax and, well, Nathan Lehman, area superintendent tomorrow morning to discuss matters that you're discussing, plus a common in-service day, but I know, Donna, you had talked about how, how we want to participate. So I know there's a meeting tomorrow. Is there something you want me to specifically bring up with Aaron?
Well, she shared a presentation on reasons employees stay at the district.
Okay.
And so I don't know if that presentation or, you know, some comments from her or some.
If we can get the presentation.
Presentation or something like that might be beneficial.
Outline of the presentation.
Just email it to us.
Yeah, outline of the presentation and mail it to us.
You know the title of it, otherwise, just basically retaining employees, Aaron Truax.
Reasons to stay in.
Well, it was under the continuous school improvements, that's who she is, the continuous student services.
Motif her and ask her for that request.
And just as we had, and Rob, you alluded to, their new business was revision of conflict of interest and outside activities of staff for a first reading. And, and so did, we have, like, one of the administrators' report comments where Hillary Cordova, Aaron Truax, and Terry Phelan spent time in the districts to discuss the CISA's shared services. Did someone come to Mozzoni and share?
Yes, and we had a conversation, and I believe that Al Betri and I, the director, will have another conversation just to set the stage for next year. And so there's two more superintendent meetings. I'll be talking with Mr. Dover Spike to see if he's interested to invite him in either to the April CISA meeting to introduce him to area superintendents, either April or May.
And then in September is when they, no, it's May, when they have the annual meeting where everyone is invited to go up. Anybody that's on the CISA, part of the CISA consortium from the state of the result, maybe that would be a, but great. Excuse me, Mr., you have a CISA in your area, so you're familiar with the CISA and, okay. But it would be nice to meet Al Betri. He's a good guy.
Okay.
Good man.
Thank you. Item fifteen, future agenda items. Is anybody wishing to bring anything back for April? Yeah, lacrosse, yes. Okay. Okay.
The health insurance? I don't know if what was decided at what, what level that's coming to, but looking at if we introduce some sort of higher buyout, how would that change our numbers?
Well, did you look into that stuff?
We have, we have to have that on the agenda no matter what because we have to make a decision, and it's in April.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll come to the full board then.
Right.
Yeah, we have to make a decision.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, moving on, item sixteen, movement into closed executive session. The board will convene into closed executive session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, print one, print C, print E, and print F of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of discussing approving employment in the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher salary schedule in section nineteen point eight-five, print one, print C, print F, and print G for the purpose of rendering advice from legal counsel.